Turn this around.
Yeah, that's why my two younger brothers best go. Caroline, we worry about you sometimes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
Swap, used to be swap back.
WPCA is working up a response to the survey that's still in draft.
To this survey?
The survey, yeah. The P O C D.
Okay.
Survey. Not this survey. Couldn't convince him that most this is gonna be a two-page spread in the P O C D. Doesn't need another month of you reviewing it. No, do one another month.
Do a push and a toe?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Another month, too.
Review the answer to.
Give me about ten seconds and you guys will be live.
Okay, if you could just close the door on your way out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Coming to you live.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting or the special meeting of the planning and zoning for Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Our first item is our pledge of allegiance. If everyone could please rise, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, uh, we are working on our plan of conservation and development. And we have our agenda here and we have our distinguished guests. So I'll turn it over to you gentlemen.
You, Pat Gallagher with the Slam Collaborative. We'll start by just quickly going over the schedule. We have a busy couple of weeks ahead of us. Um, we're still on track with our master project schedule. You'll notice that we're about to hit a busy season for some initial community outreach with the, um, survey being launched, uh, hopefully within the next week or so. And then our first community workshop scheduled for June sixth at the community center. Um, but it'll be good to kind of get all this in, uh, for the summer so that we can use the summer to, to work on some of our remaining technical tasks and then hit the ground running, uh, come fall. So I wanted to start this evening, um, just by spending no more than fifteen minutes reviewing the, uh, draft community survey. I hope everyone had a chance to, um, review it and, um, I go through section by section and, um. So just to kind of provide a little bit of context, this is an interesting time to do a community survey, just given the amount of other surveys that have occurred over the last twenty-four months or so. Um, and so our goal was to not be redundant with the town council strategic plan survey or the affordable housing plan survey, but try to build off of those and ask some new questions that, um, reflect some of the issues that you're dealing with as a commission, um, reflecting two thousand twenty-three. We did want to include some questions from your last, uh, survey from two thousand thirteen. That way we can compare data points and see if community sentiment has changed on anything over ten years. And so as we go through this, you'll note that those are highlighted in yellow. So that'll be a question where we'll have a ten-year comparison. So we'll start by going through section one, which are just a series of questions about, I'll, I'll call them world questions at first to get folks, uh, comfortable with the platform. And then just getting into overall quality of life, um, strengths and weaknesses, uh, things of the like. Were there any questions on any of the section one questions?
You know, before you get into it, uh, because maybe this will help us as we go through.
Sure.
Um, at least somewhere it said this was supposed to be a fifteen-minute survey.
Mm-hmm.
Took me twenty-five minutes to go through and just circle my answers on here and I didn't even fill out the.
Okay.
The long form. So if we can look for ways to make it shorter, if that's our goal, I mean, maybe we want a twenty-five-minute survey, but I kind of think we don't.
Certainly, yeah. If you think there are questions that you'd rather see cut for the sake of brevity, then yeah, we certainly do that. Any questions on the section one?
On the number two, is there any chance of adding a bullet point saying fifty years or more?
We could do that. Uh, another way I've worded that is my whole life, if you want to get folks who are, you know, long or lifetime members, but we could certainly.
Well, that could, you know, that could be a twenty-year-old person. So I'd rather, if we could put fifty-plus years. Is there a reason for the increments that you're using? Is it?
They were the same one as last time.
Okay.
Uh, it's almost like it should be like the increase as you go down. I mean, two to five doesn't really, it's always been here for three years, you know? I, it's just me, but, uh, I'm looking at it like less than two years, uh, two to seven, you know, it's just kind of increments that you go up. Would that help you, Kevin, or?
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd like to see where the, the aging population stand, like where, where they stand. So that's why I'd like to see the people that were born and raised here that are still staying, like they're the knit of the community.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see fifty.
Excuse me, to fifty or what if we did forty?
Even forty, don't see, I'd be under that bracket.
Forty plus, do fifty plus, do sixty plus.
I think we can work on this. I just wrote down zero to five, five to ten, ten to twenty, twenty to forty, and then more than forty. So it's fewer categories. It doesn't take as long to figure it out and then boom, you're on your way. So it just.
You know where you go.
Yep.
So. Got it.
But if you're using this as one of the questions that was asked ten years ago so that you have a point of comparison, if we start changing that, then don't you lose that point of comparison you're looking for?
This is more for cross-tabulations.
Okay.
More than anything. So I don't think we lose any specific feedback as much as we'll just be able to slice and dice it different ways.
Yeah, and I want to go off what, uh, Commissioner Foley said for question number four and, or at least putting in the answer for the same thing. Because if you've lived here for your entire life, you know, you never moved into town, you never left. So I assume that would fall under other, but I'm not sure if that's gonna be like a blink box where you type it in or you're just clicking other. I'm not sure if we could have a box saying, you know, never left town, for example, to show the people that have stayed here.
Uh, remain is supposed to do with that, right?
I think for question four, we can add a board in South Windsor, maybe as one of the choices. I think that'll cover that.
Yeah, it's a quick question, like say on number four where you have other on the bottom. Um, I'm not sure how you, these are gonna be read, but would there be an opportunity to fill in something, like fill in a blank?
Yep. So we'll, the other ones will have a follow-up.
Okay.
Um, where they'll be able to type something in.
That way you know what other is, but yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. Any other questions on the first introduction section?
So this is one of several questions to try to pin down what our priorities are. And here we have sidewalks and walking paths. Other places we have bike paths. Other places we have hiking, bike lanes, bike paths. Um, this seems to me there's like three different kind of things that people walk and bike on. There's plain old rustic hiking trail through the woods. There's like a multi-use path and then there's sidewalks that are not wide enough to be multi-use paths. So I kind of like throughout here, uh, bike lanes are, I guess, different than bike paths, so.
But this question.
You've got, you've got bike paths. Other places we have multi-use paths, so.
Yeah, we do have some questions specifically to biking and walking a little later where we can maybe add some detail. As always, I think this was intended of like, let's get all the issues in one question without getting too specific, just for comparison's sake. And then we can have some detailed transportation questions.
Um, one thing that I don't see in any of your priorities is athletic facilities. Am I incorrect or?
Yep, I think that's a great addition.
Yep.
You know, like we just opened up eight pickleball courts in October.
You call it recreation and athletic facilities. Enhancing recreation and athletics.
Improving.
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 In both five and seven, I'm trying to figure out like, um, what is it that the younger crowd is interested in? Can you give me an idea of what here would capture that if we wanted to see? Because we're talking about what is the highest priority maybe?
Yep, so we have an age question at the back end of the survey. So we'll be able to run cross-tabulations. So if we wanted to pull out, let's say all respondents twenty-five and younger.
But how do we know what the younger people are interested in based on these cat, based on these items that are here?
Do you think there are things that aren't captured on here?
I mean, maybe the appearance of commercial areas, but I don't know, not commercial areas, but more, I'm thinking like access to things that young folks are interested in.
Which is generally education. I mean, when they, they come here for their, young families are coming here for, uh, school system.
I'm thinking where teenagers go spend some time.
Yeah. That too.
Education thing.
There's a difference, there's a difference between athletic facilities and sports programs. Is, is that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't know. Maybe kids these days want, want more access to, uh, restaurants or places where they can hang out or, I don't know. I like access to movie theaters and things like that, right? What, what is the younger crowd thinking? I thought five and seven were opportunities to capture that, but I didn't, um, I myself didn't know how to pick up on that.
You could possibly put, you know, access to nightlife, for example, to, you know, if you wanted to include an option for that. Um, I, I was also gonna comment that question five, I don't see an option for other, which I know questions four and seven do. I'm not sure if that was on purpose.
For ranking questions, I guess it depends. We have open-ended questions below where folks can write in. This makes folks think, I think, a little bit because they're constrained. Um, so we can certainly add another box, but it may be captured in some of these questions, the open-ended ones as well.
I guess I wouldn't add other to the ones where you gotta pick the top three.
Yeah, that's true.
And we do have in the next section some detailed ones about services and programs where we could. If you did want to add in things for, you know, teens or young adults, that could maybe get added into specifically community services or facilities.
Um, can you go back to seven for us?
Sure.
But what's, what does lifestyle opportunities mean?
That would be you moving to Florida because of the weather, or you want to be somewhere that's more urban. So it's kind of an open-ended.
Because all the other ones are pretty, at least in my mind, are very specific.
Mm-hmm.
Lifestyle opportunities, we wouldn't know exactly what. Maybe there should be a please specify.
Maybe like an I E.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah, I think, not the next page, does have a other please specify. So it's there as part of the.
So the idea is to capture that there.
So, yeah, this, this is almost the beginnings of an exit survey, right? Why, why, why don't people love us in ten years? Why? And hopefully we'll, we'll get something from this.
I also wanted to, to go back to question five for a second. I, I thought it was included. That's why I didn't mention it. But, uh, I, I, I think something for question five to include there is adding an option that says, you know, access to affordable housing. Um, whether or not it, you know, we, we do any developments in the next ten years, you know, there's gonna be. I, I guess for a lot of people, it's a contentious issue. And I know some people may not view it as a top three issue, but if you're gonna have fifteen options there, I think, at least talking about housing for one of them would be important.
Second from the bottom, is that just not worded well? Providing more housing options, including affordable housing, would that work?
I think the first time I, I read over it, um, I, I didn't mark it, but it, it, it could work well. Um, I'm not sure if it has to be reworded is, is what I'm saying.
You got affordable, you also have senior housing. I kind of like, I mean, that kind of covers both, right?
Providing more housing options.
Okay. And the goal of this is to kind of hone in our scope. So we may see, oh, that had a, a lot of people checked that box. Then at a workshop, you can have a housing table that kind of gets that next level of granularity, what we mean, senior do mean affordable. So this is kind of helping define our scope, I guess, a little bit more without necessarily answering all the questions. But it'll guide us to ask the right questions later on.
All right. Um, just to speed it up a little, if anybody has any questions, um, because he, they had said fifteen minutes. If we could write them down and we'll see if they're covered somewhere in our, their, uh, slideshow. And we can go back to them after if we need to.
Great. And, um, I was talking with Michelle as well, um, and, you know, an alternative is if you think of something after this evening, um, send it through Michelle maybe by the end of the week. And then we can kind of collect them all and, and make those final adjustments early next week. I think we were kind of launching, uh, in the middle of next week, um, to give Michelle a little time to finalize it with us when she gets back.
Again, uh, number eleven, I would separate hiking from multi-use and sidewalks.
Clark, did you want us to move on to the conservation number? Can pivot back to this?
Yeah, please.
Have steam at the end? This is the fun stuff now, so.
So, uh, now, what conservation elements of the plan? These are the types of things that South Windsor might want to preserve or protect or enhance going forward. These could be things which are really important to the whole fabric, the community, and that's hopefully we'll learn from the survey. Things that attract people and keep people here because of the, the humidity package, if you will, that South Windsor offers. So the contents, the things we want to talk about tonight are natural resources, open space, agricultural resources. And the phraseology, community character, which was in the prior plan, is now being reflected here as ambiance and sense of place. The word character is, uh, falling out of favor, um, because it's tended to be weaponized. Um, so we think we can still get to the same sense of the, what, what's important to people through the concepts of ambiance and sense of place. Um, and we should talk about that and get there. Is it if I collect this, go slide aside? All right. Drive as I go here. Um, so the first topic we want to talk about here, uh, first of all, is natural resources. Includes water resources, land resources, biologic resources. Of course, there are air resources, but there aren't great tools at the local level. So primarily this is done at the state and federal level. So we're gonna focus on the top three at the beginning as part of the conversation overall. There was a section in the two thousand fourteen P O C D on natural resources. Um, our overall goal was to protect and continue to contribute to character and appearance and provide ecological and public health functions and recreational value. And again, the strategies were basically about protecting these types of resources. I have good news, uh, overall, is that South Windsor is doing a great job in, um, many of these areas. Um, so in a sense, I think the overall message here going forward is stay the course, continue to focus on these particular areas. This is our first cut at a map of natural resource inventory. Um, so, uh, some of the key things on this map in terms of their geographic locations in the community. Flood zones really sort of dominated by the Connecticut River and some of the other, uh, waterways in town. Um, the wetland areas, which are spread throughout in the lighter green areas. These orange blobby circles are what we call the natural diversity database. This is a database maintained by the state, which is, uh, species of special concern, uh, rare and endangered species. A special turtle or salamander was seen in this location, so they, they log these locations. So these are areas in town that perhaps provide habitat, but they can also be other types of resources such as, I, I know of a bat cave in one part of Connecticut, waterfalls in another, et cetera. So these are areas which are kind of unique, uh, overall in Connecticut. Critical habitats are included within those areas, um, and then some areas of, uh, steep terrain overall. I think the first thing we wanted to talk about was water resources. Water is critical to human life and also critical to environmental health. Overall, we're being concerned about surface water quality, um, groundwater quality. Um, and what we find overall is the surface water quality is generally good in South Windsor. Um, the Connecticut River, as you can see, is colored, it's sort of this goldish color, and that's because of upstream pollution that kind of works its way down the river. So it's not recommended for drinking or, but it's okay for recreation and similar types of activities. In terms of groundwater quality, most areas of town are good. You'll notice that there's some smaller, I guess I'll call them peach blobs. These can be sites of gasoline spills or other things like that have occurred over time. And there's this large rectangular area, um, which is the Brickyard Ponds. We understand that there's a superfund site in that area. So this area, we're trying to get more information out so that we can give you good advice in terms of future land uses that would be appropriate for this area.
So I didn't understand that picture at all. It didn't, I mean, nothing told me why there's a big orange blob in the middle.
No, we're trying to find that out, so we've communicated with the health department and through them to.
Yeah, but I mean.
It's not a legend is what you're saying.
This is a page in P O C D, just pictures and helping me understand the words.
Yeah, I understand, and I think our our goal here tonight was to talk this out, so this wasn't in fact a representation. This is a snip from the state's water quality map, but we should've told you that, we should've copied the legend, so.
One thing I would add is that, you know, the sewer plant right now is discharging uh. Uh, water consistently discharges water that's in compliance with the uh. Federal regulate, state and federal regulations, so that's the, the river, right?
From the sewer plant down.
So Vivert Road, if you can zoom, I don't know if you can. It's, that's it, that's the size.
Well, there's some stormwater runoff in that area, but the sewer plant just discharges straight into the river.
So I think what Michelle had said to me is that she understands, again, the Brickyard activities, though what was going on there, and then. Other historic. Activities which may have left. Groundwater discharges, so again, we're trying to track this down because sometimes these can affect future land use. As an environmental restrictions that would prohibit residential use, or yes, that would be fine for industrial use, so. Trying to get a handle on this particular area.
Well, the Brickyard is interesting because the influent. Has a higher turbidity than the outfluent. And yet it's unacceptable what's going out, so it's like, there's a conflict between reality and the state regulations, I mean. They do nothing. If they weren't there, what was going into the river would be worse.
So you described a scenario where we'll get this information from our contact with the health department, understand what's going on there. And again, if it's a. Amenity in terms of water quality treatment, it's it's uh buffering or vegetation is helping to address and cleaning it up. Before it gets discharged to the river, then we're gonna come back and be able to tell you that.
Can you enlarge that for me just a little bit more, so I can see south of the Brickyard? I can't see anything on my map.
I think, yeah, no, I think.
That's it?
You want, you wanted to zoom in?
Yeah, I wanna. There we go, there we go, a little bit bigger.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to read it, so the resolution of it was.
So to south of the Brickyard, there's a rectangular piece.
To the left.
To the left. Come down, right there. What road is that?
What's the street there that's?
Yeah, it does look like where um Nomad does. That's the street. That, that's the residential street right below.
Colony?
Yeah.
So the interesting.
I I think on Steve's point, I'd like to see a. Reference to what we're looking at, cause.
So this is essentially the same map that was in the twenty fourteen P O C D.
Right.
So I think the idea at this point in time is to get a listing together of the types of of sites that are on here, so we don't want to. Well, let me talk to uh Mike and Pat about whether identifying the address or the owner, I I mean, we'll figure out. We'll figure out the right way to do it. Uh, so in terms of land and soil resources, the soil types are generally good, I mean agriculture has been a big part of the South Windsor for a long, long time. Some communities have steep slopes prevalent in many parts of town, we really don't, so much of the land is really sort of developable. And the water and sewer infrastructure we have in town supports development, so there's no major land or sort of constraints that. We've identified at this point in time. Biologic resources, again, I mentioned the natural diversity database, um, the best management practice these days. That if an applicant was to come to the commission, um, the commission might on its application forms have a requirement. That the applicant tell you whether or not their site is within one of those circles or areas. The challenge that you would have as policymakers is that the state will not disclose what the circle's for. Because now they've told you, and if something happens, you are potentially liable for the destruction of an important resource. But I think it's important for you to have applicants contact D E P. And be able to get a letter from D E P that says their development or application will not affect. This sensitive resource, or it will, and they have modified their plan to address that accordingly. So I don't think there's a majority of towns in Connecticut that do this, but that would be the end game. At this point in time, the map can be informational to you and say, oh, look, there's sensitive resources in our community. One of the options for you to think about as part of the P O C D process is to put it onto your application form as a checkbox for the applicant to take the next step. They make contact with D E P and report back to you uh as part of that process. The other aspects of biologic resources, the core habitats and wildlife corridors. Issues related to native, non-native, and invasive species, your zoning regulations currently contain language that invasive species are not permitted. But what about non-native species, or should native species be required? And so I think this is again something for us to think about, uh, perhaps a modification to the regulations itself.
So wildlife corridors, I mean. My feeling is that the way we encourage open space, we're kinda providing them, but is there some measure of. Success here, are we doing a good job, are we?
Well, I I think that uh certainly that one of the areas we're gonna wanna spend time talking about tonight is sort of the open space approach for South Windsor. And I think there's multiple open space objectives, and we wanna make sure that the P O C D reflects the overall town vision. So if you can give us about five minutes to get there, Steve? So I think overall, in terms of natural resource strategies, our sense is keep up the good work. I think the main issue going forward is gonna be stormwater runoff and drainage. What we're seeing are situations where weather patterns are changing, we're getting more severe and frequent storm events. Many of our culverts and other drainage systems were designed for smaller storms, uh, and not as frequent, so now we're having situations. We're trying to catch up, if you will, we can have neighborhood flooding where, you know, we never saw it before. Um, the good news is we're not a coastal community, which are also dealing with sea level rise and other scenarios that are coming along, but. Realistically, we kinda hardwired our drainage system in, and it's changing on us, and we've gotta try to catch up. So the big approach these days, the best management practice is what's called L I D, L I D stands for low impact development. But really what it is, the drainage approach, where we try to treat rainfall as close to where the raindrop falls as possible. So rather than the old model, which is we tried to get into catch basins and then bigger and bigger and bigger pipes. Um, and basically if water got polluted along the way, we accelerated its discharge to a downstream location. And as part of that, we also depleted groundwater recharge. So the basic idea on a site would be to capture the rainfall, get it into infiltrators to get into the ground. And use vegetation to pick up pollutants and remediate, so in fact, the off-site discharge can be moderated. So this is an area that the town's been working on, and something we would wanna suggest to you for your consideration for the future. To continue in this direction, both in terms of new developments coming to you, demonstrating that they're compliant with the state's stormwater quality manual. But also encouraging public works to continue the work that they're doing to try to retrofit drainage systems in town. To include the L I D and address stormwater issues.
So a lot of like, I can remember a number of projects coming to us, but the Home Depot is a good example, where they bragged about how. Unless it's like a hundred-year rain, all the rainfall is gonna go into their, um.
Detention basin?
Detention basin, or whatever, uh, so will not leave the site. Um, so I don't know, do we require that anywhere? Does inland wetlands require that? You know, what's?
Well, I mean, kind of, if you were saying, Glenn, a couple of years ago, we looked at the town. Townwide for for runoff. South Windsor was an early adopter when it came to stormwater management. And it pretty much in like in the, in the late eighties and nineties, um, they detained everything. So when we looked at the town as a watershed, we were detained at the bottom of the watershed, we were detained at the middle of the watershed. And detained at the upper portions of the watershed. So we kind of. Jumped into it with both feet, and uh one of the things we were looking at is how to balance out the runoff townwide again. If you look at a, if you look at a a watershed, and you look at stormwater management, and you're, you're, you're holding back the water. One thing you don't wanna do is at the bottom of the watershed, you don't wanna hold the water so that it, the water from the top of the watershed. Meets it midway in a storm, and that's kinda what we did, uh, quite a bit. So as we started developing the maintenance of some of these uh, these stormwater structures, especially in the lower portions of the watershed. We looked at, um. Cleaning out the outlets, but maybe not restoring some of the, um, um, the volume retention volume. Some of the bigger ones, especially down, you know, on the Route Five area, closer to the rivers and that sort of thing. Cause we make sure that the outlets are going, but if they were, if they uh grew in with vegetation to the point where the, um. It it didn't contain as much storage volume as it maybe it did when it was brand new, we would look at those on a case-by-case basis. Say, okay, this is really far down the watershed, let's maintain the flow-through, but let's reduce its detention. Properties so that the water there gets out before the water from upper portions of the watershed hits it, and you have a, you have a clash.
If you look at some of these areas that are storm, stormwaters coming up out of the grates onto the street. Is there, and there's nearby open space, is there a way to take advantage of the open space to. Somehow improve that situation, I'm thinking of Evergreen Crossing, pre, not, is it not Evergreen Crossing, uh? Not Evergreen Walk, but up by Kent Lane and.
Oh, yes.
I mean, they got a huge storm drain problem there.
Evans, Evans Crossing.
Evans Crossing, yeah. But behind there is a whole lot of open space, you know? I don't know if there's a way to. Use our open space to avoid having to dig up all the pipes.
So I think there's two things to think about, I think going forward, we're gonna have to try to fix these sort of problems that happened historically. The 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 current storm pattern is overwhelming the system that we put in place. I also think for new development and redevelopment going forward, to get people to convert over to an L I D approach. So very often, what they're gonna try to do is capture and infiltrate and treat the water quality on their site. And I think at that point in time, um, developers historically would try to capture and scoot it out. Not my problem anymore, it's you guys downstream, and realistically, the L I D approach is, okay. Water's falling on your property, you're gonna have to figure out how to take care of it in a way that's environmentally friendly. I I I know that the town is working on this, and the plan is gonna encourage and promote. And even require this type of approach in the future, uh, cause it's a better way, so I think that's the main water. Excuse me, natural resource recommendation is water quality and water quantity related, um, and it's sort of a change of thinking in terms of what we do. Anything else on natural resources, and we'll kick over to open space? I think open spaces could be the big talker here today in terms of open space issues. And I think there's four key elements we'd like to talk with you about, first of which is sort of the definition of open space. And I think any good plan needs to have a vision for what it is we're trying to accomplish, it's gotta have organizations committed to bringing this vision to reality. And then having the tools in place, and I think that is the foundation of a good open space approach. We had a chapter in the twenty fourteen P O C D with regard to open space, and the goal, continue to add to and maintain our open space system. And we think that's likely to be the goal going forward as well. So our hope here as part of the plan is to provide uh structured guidance and support the efforts in town today. So what is open space? It's unfortunately that those two words together are almost as bad as the phrase affordable housing. Because you say the phrase and people go to a conclusion in their mind as to what it is. And so I think it's important for us to state as part of the plan that this definition from the twenty twenty-three uh open space master plan. Is probably our framework going forward, so that we're all on the same page. Land use for agriculture parks, what wetlands, wildlife, historic scenic preservation, other purposes is set forth. Uh, in state and federal laws and regulations. And I think what's important about this is that many people look at undeveloped land in South Windsor and say, oh, that's beautiful open space. And the issue is that it's not, it's somebody's perhaps private property. And so people may come before the commission and testify that this development is gonna destroy the open space in town. So I think one of the things for us to think about as part of the P O C D is, is open space undeveloped land? Or is open space land that's preserved in some way, shape, or form, uh, in terms of town ownership, et cetera? So I I think getting this definition. Into the P O C D, or a definition into the P O C D is an important next step for us.
I mean, a lot of this, if we've got land use for agriculture, they can turn around and build houses there uh next year, you know, so. If you wanna emphasize the preserved part of it. You need to do something, and the other side of it is, there's a little bit of like, who owns it, I mean, it it. Should it say regardless of ownership, uh, could be state land, it could be a, uh. You know, a land conservation trust, it could be actual town open space. I I think you addressed that in here somewhere, but.
Do a little bit, and I think what our our goal is is to do exactly what you've suggested, Steve, which is to break down these categories. Perhaps even a little bit further, a little bit differently, to be able to really color code these different categories of open space. These are state-owned, um, these are town-owned, and they're either configured or dedicated for open space, or they're just town-owned properties. Which ones of these fall into which categories? Some of these are, I think it's the oranges are the subdivision open spaces, these are open spaces that the town has acquired as part of subdivisions, they may not be town-owned. Uh, it could be owned by an association, et cetera, but depending on what our open space vision is. We could have the ability on town-owned open space to do quite a bit, cause it's our land. State, we have to kinda have conversations with them, and subdivision open space may be a little bit different. And the other thing that's shown on this map is the open space uh recommendations, the open space master plan. And these are colored, these are number-coded, if you will, in terms of different areas in town. In terms of uh open space acquisition, um, so we'll come back to that uh in a moment. So. As I looked at this map, I was thinking about how would I express to you the open space vision? So there are a number of parcels that identify individual parcels. They're not always interconnected, they're not always in places of sensitive natural resources. They're possibly opportunities because of ownership or uh farming or or other aspects. But how would you describe the open space vision for South Windsor? Is in the bullets in the sidebar, is it as much land as we can get, and we're gonna use it to sort of guide or frame residential development? Or prevent residential development, is it in natural resource-based, is it the concept of greenways and linkages and wildlife corridors? Protecting scenic assets, providing for agriculture and food security, all of these, none of these? What do you, what do you, what do you think? How would you express South Windsor's open space vision to Pat and I?
I mean, there's a need for balance. I mean, there's a need for balance, right? I mean, you could make the whole thing in open space and we wouldn't have any houses, you know, so. But what's the right balance there?
So I don't know that any community ever gets to, you know, a hundred percent developed, right? There's always redevelopment, stuff like that that happens. Is there an end result that we would hope to achieve when we're all done? Are we in a process or we're looking for an end result? What do you guys think?
I think, just me, I, I, we've, within the last, and I know this was done in thirteen and fourteen. But in the last seven years, we have lost. So much agricultural land to. We'll call it warehouse development, which is our biggest battle in town right now, but now the, the, our next battle, again, will go to. Supporting our uh board of education and the residential aspect is. Causing a strain on our community um on a tax base. So I, I mean, I look at saying, you know, prevent residential development. The biggest thing is people, if you put a survey out right now, they don't want any warehouses, so. The open, huh, what's the, the description of open spaces? People, you know, I think if. We have to wait until the survey comes back, but people are like, we've had enough, like, we have exploded in seven years, there's. We've lost our identity, you know, what are we? We a warehouse community or we?
And I think the question.
We've lost who we are.
Can I ask you to go back to from here? Now forward. Yeah, we list the different kinds of open spaces. One category that you don't, I don't think you list, although the print's pretty small, is power line corridors.
Why, yeah, it's down there, it's the other open space.
Easements, you mean, like the?
Well, I mean, yeah, these are large transmission line corridors are uh, sometimes we own them. Sometimes they're, and, you know, an easement, but together they, they're, you know, they're a wildlife corridor, there, there's a lot of. I mean, they're not always beautiful, but there's a lot of open space features associated with those, all the power lines. Uh going through town regardless of who owns the land.
And uh they also make up the greenways.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, that's one of them, but you'll notice it ends, the fact is that power line goes all the way down to Chapel Road.
Yeah, this print here.
Yeah. I would just say, I would just say, you know, in, in this.
We're having that cross town trail, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's a good example, but there are other power lines that aren't included in the cross town trail idea that are still very open. Uh going across from the Avery Street Pump Station over to Dart Hill Road is a, another beautiful area under a power line.
And I think that's what we'd like to capture from your thoughts is what sort of could be our vision. Um, as we looked at the map, these uh colored areas here are the primary and secondary. Target properties that were identified in the open space plan, and as we sort of looked at natural resources.
So, I gotta ask you, that's kind of the, the big parcels that are left, right? That's pretty much it.
So that's one open space strategy. So another one was we were sort of enamored by the color coding here and sort of the linear aspects of things that you've identified sort of already. And so, um, our open space vision could be this concept of greenways or greenway connections. And here's the phase one of the cross town trail, which is going to start with that. Um, I feel somewhat fortunate in the sense, I, I live in a community where the Farmington Valley Greenway Trail goes through. From basically New Haven to uh Westfield, Mass at this point in time, eventually to Northampton. And the amount of recreational benefit that the community has seen from this, so. Greenway trails are sort of a motivating factor for a lot of people, so it's not just open space as a defensive mechanism.
It's usable open space.
But it's as, as a vision, in other words, if, if open space is see but you can't touch.
Right.
But if you can't, so this is, this is a possibility for us to guide our efforts, enhance our efforts.
I think it's great, I know, that, that you're, you're on to like Eminem northeast part of town and there's a bunch of tracks of land. That seem like they can almost be linked up together and provide some type of trail system.
So we thought about this, we think this could be a longer term strategy for the town. Some of the parcels in the northeast corner are subdivision open space.
Right.
So whether or not the town actually has the rights to go in and put a trail on a piece of association owned property is probably a longer dialogue. But we think there are properties where we could get started. Once people realize they're driving to the cross town trail, but they could have a trail in their own neighborhood.
Well, see, I'd welcome it, that's me, I live right next to open space and I, I, I'd welcome it, but that's me.
There's another corridor you could sort of see that's kinda going along to the east, to the west of Avery Street.
Yeah.
You can do a hiking trail going from, not, not the greenway, but over there now to the right.
To the right, the Tanish.
Yeah, all down through here.
Yes.
All the way down.
Yeah, hike all the way from uh the, you know, the northern border of town to um certainly bales above road. And possibly down to the school there. So we need, you know, those, that's why I keep talking about, you know, hiking trails versus.
Yep.
Multi-use paths.
But the sensitive nature of this is something that we're kind of attuned to. Because I think at this point in time, the one thing I wanna uh focus in on this map before I go on to the next one, is this area here I call the big block. Which is, do you know what that is?
Industrial, commercial.
It's all commercial, industrial, yeah.
Open space provision, we generally don't require open space as part of industrial developments. So if in fact there are sensitive resources, we could get conservation. But if our goal was to connect, there might be some places that we would say along a street. We, you don't wanna go through the middle of an industrial property perhaps, this is our, our economic engine in a sense. But it, it might be worthwhile to think about a bigger picture and how connections like that could get made. In, in, in a strategic location or two.
It does work, they did it up in Ellington over by um the Y M C I up there.
Uh-huh, how about the river, our, our, the connectivity of our.
So we don't have a lot of open space over there at the present time, it's farmed, et cetera. We think it's a wonderful opportunity longer term for the town, you have an asset.
It's all private.
Windsor just got a big grant to make the connection through to Hartford, so it's certainly a priority of the state. But its remoteness right now is actually something that might. I guess the, the phraseology I use with Pat and Mike was the cost benefit. In other words, it would cost us money to get a trail in, we think that it would be attractive. But people might be reluctant to use it. So our thought process was that locations closer to population and destinations is a great way to get started. And then you can slowly incrementally build and then sort of uh, well, get back to the river.
One of the issues and, and I'm an avid runner and I run on the trails a lot, I did, did it today. Uh, is the upkeep of the trails, especially this time of year, the grass goes long and it seems like the town can't keep up. No offense to Southwest, they can do a good job overall, but. I want this, but if they can't keep up now, and you add four miles of trail to the town, I mean, who's gonna take care of it and cut it?
Very important consideration.
Once or twice a year and cut it in September, cause now you lost the whole summer.
So some open space is very passive and there's really no management that goes into that, right? The land is there, um, if a tree falls in the forest, does it make a noise type of thing or, you know, who knows? But then you get active or more active open space with trails and that is a consideration in terms of what would be the responsibility.
If I compare us to Vernon, I mean Vernon has, you know, a big um.
Linear Park.
Yeah, Valley Park. Trail. But they have a whole network of hiking trails in there, which we totally lack. I mean, you got all kinds of different blaze trails going all through Vernon, including from the, the Valley Falls area. Up in parallel to the Upper River Trail.
So I don't think that as part of the P O C D, we wanna compete with other open space planning efforts the town has done. But I think what we'd like to do is try to find a way to pull them together. So I think my next, oh, Blue Way is something else which.
Comparing is.
Park and Rec is working on in terms of uh boat launches and boat pickup locations, et cetera, it's another aspect. So I think what we'd like to try to do is be able to pull elements of the vision together. Um, and, and, and recognize all the work and the great work that's being done in town. I think the challenge too for South Windsor a little bit is the fact that there's, there's like four different organizations that are involved. Under the town council umbrella with open space. And so the question is, how can we coordinate and get all of those? Because planning and zoning is, is one entity that gets involved in acquiring or recommending a twenty four reviews in terms of open space preservation. And the commission has the P O C D. Park and Rec has the Park and Rec Master Plan and they talk in there about open space. You got the Open Space Task Force, which has been very active in the community in terms of the open space plan, which was adopted in twenty twenty three. And then we've got the Agricultural Commission that's identified properties um that they'd like to see preserved. And the question is, are these entities coordinated like, you know, a piston engine? Or are they individual entities going forward? But if we could get to sort of one vision for something that I think is passionate for people in town, both on boards and commissions and residents. We could make some significant progress.
As you, as you have, the commission is laid out there, I think. There's a disconnect, just like in any political arena, there's so many different things going on, but. Critical of one another, you, you take a look at the ag commission, so we have the benefit, say we have the boat launch on Vivar Road. But yet we have valuable farmland where if we, if we improve upon that, well, then now we're inviting the public down to the agriculture. Where vandalism is already rampant, so. Between planning and zoning and open, e- everybody has to get in a room together to make, what do we really want? Because we have to protect what's left of agriculture in town, which is not a lot.
I think all of these boards from what we saw from the materials and what they've been working on are doing a good job. It's just.
But we're not working together, we're all separate.
I think there are times that they're coordinated and times perhaps they could be better coordinated. I don't think they openly fight with each other.
It's, it's not fighting, but we don't, we don't have dialogue together.
We have a different roles too.
Right.
We, we deal with applications, so someone comes in on uh Masco Road and they wanna build a development, we look out for the open space. But can we make that into a corridor? Well, so happens that worked out to be a nice corridor, but um, you know, we. Our role is focused on things that people apply for and of course writing this document, but. Parks and Rec is got a different role. Um, so, I mean, in, in some sense, because each of us has our different role. O- o- open space task force is really about buying land. Uh, if there's nothing to buy, then, you know, I mean, they don't get it, they don't even come talk to us when we, when we're looking at Masco Road, okay?
Well, actually, Open Space Task Force is on the back end of that. So once the open space is being presented to the town, whether it's. Subdivision open space by site design or whether it's a landowner who is offering this for sale. Open Space Task Force gets involved to evaluate the, 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 the property. And then report to the council on whether or not it's a wise acquisition. So I think what you're saying, Stephen, I, I would somewhat agree that maybe. During the, the conception of the site design for, for like a residential open space. Maybe that's when some of those groups need to get together to determine what would be the best configuration. Of the open space as opposed to, here's what we have type of a thing. It needs to be more, more discussion with those groups at that time, I don't know.
Jeff, does your conservation commission focus on conservation or is it mostly just inland wetlands applications?
It's, it's, it's ninety-five percent uh wetlands applications. So um, a number of years back, one of the thoughts were was to take the conservation commission. And actually make the Open Space Task Force the Conservation Commission. They wanted to get into more advocacy at that point in time as opposed to just evaluation. It didn't, it didn't go anywhere, but it's certainly something to maybe bring up again.
Isn't it, isn't it like the, the water's already over the dam when open space, like when an application comes into us and we approve it? They kinda get, this is what you got, like, you know what I'm saying? We don't, we don't get their input. When we get an application, yep, you know what I'm saying?
Right, well, and that's, and I think that's what, what, what Glenn is saying is, is being on the, the Open Space Task Force. And I think Bart can kind of um chime in, but um, we've always felt that the task force. Is an, an evaluation and reporting body to the council. Less, less so than, than advocacy about here's what you should be buying type of a thing.
That's where the con, that's where conservation, that's where if they team, if they took the hat on as conservation. There would be more input in the value of the land that we're, open spaces taking. You know what I'm saying? Instead of always getting that, that, that triangular piece at the end of a cul-de-sac, like, which has no value. It's not good for walking trails, it's not good for.
Like the development off Nevers Road there, you know, but we actually told them we didn't want it, right?
Yeah, ex, yes, so.
I think this is perhaps where the P O C D could help the commission and perhaps the other entities in town. The regulations, the subdivision and zoning regulations contain language which talks about when an open space development would be suggested or required. But there's multiple sources, so there's no one source of information that says, hey, if you're planning on developing here. We're, we're essentially strongly leaning towards an open space subdivision. Cause we want open space, we either want it for trails or for natural resources or other important features. And you should be advised that we're gonna start off with a fifty percent open space dedication on this parcel. We don't really have that today, it's a kind of a touchy feely and so maybe when it gets to you, somebody's already spent tens of thousands of dollars. Designing a subdivision. So one of the things that we talked about was this concept of maybe there's an open space. I, I hate to use the word plan, cause other, other entities in town have open space plans. But the idea is from a regulatory perspective, if you're within these areas, you're looking, we're, we're leaning towards. A conservation subdivision unless you can convince us that's not a good idea.
Well, that was the identified targeted properties that were numbered on the open space.
So if I come in with one that's not numbered, and I think my point is, is if, if we have a vision. Then we've got the, the, the uh pre-indication to an applicant, these are fifty percenters, we're looking at these. And these other parcels, perhaps they're in a location or place, they may not add much to the open space system or the resources, et cetera. And we might lean the other way. So I think right now, I had several conversations with Michelle and with Jeff is that, okay, well, what, which of these maps do you rely on? Well, we kinda rely on all of them. And if, if there really isn't a plan, there's different plans or is there a plan or not?
Well, those numbered parcels are actually parcels that they're recommending we acquire. But it doesn't say, okay, here's a, a parcel of whatever few there are left that's suitable for building houses. We also want that to be, you know, like that's the second set of numbers, maybe letters or something. These are areas where we expect to, an open space development to build, work on this corridor that we believe in.
And I, I think that that's the issue, because uh for a longer term, it's quite possible that parcels. And I'm thinking over on Main Street, the way the map was laid out, there were clusters of parcels. But if somebody came in to develop a parcel in between those two clusters, it doesn't suggest anything in terms of fifty percent open space. Or acquisition by the town, so is that now a lost opportunity that we could have connected them in some way, shape or form with? Fifty percent open space versus twenty percent. So I, I just wanna kind of push the envelope a little bit on these questions to try to get to a vision. That is embraced by the commission and by the other open space entities in town. So that we're a well-coordinated engine, all the pistons are firing, we're all working in a, in the same direction.
So, if we take this discussion and translate it into the P O C D, there are other places where we have maps, like where we wanted walkways. Uh, do we need to develop a map of where we wanna, where we have open space corridors? And where we'd like to add open space corridors, is it, would that be a feature in here?
I think it is, I think we talked about this, we felt we needed to go back and look at the open space inventory map. And color code it slightly differently in terms of its functionality and its attributes that we could now use as a. In terms of its functionality and its attributes that we could now use as a foundation to build from. So, I think we would then come back to you, possibly in one of our working sessions, we might bring in the members of these different entities. And get people around a table to talk about sort of our overall vision for open space. Not to integrate or criticize anything what already has been done, but to see if we can find ways to. Expand on these efforts. So, I think. I've got general consensus that. In my mind, anyway, from the commission, to show us a vision or the opportunities or options for a vision. And then we can talk about how to explore those. So, I think that this is the last slide for the open space section, I think I've got sort of a cautious green light here. The town has three point six million dollars in its open space fund right now, which is awesome, right? So, the town can act when any of those parcels come up. I think some of the concerns that we might have in the long run is that depending on the aging demographic. We may be also seeing a scenario where more parcels are gonna come up for sale than we have money for. So, we started to think about it, it might be the type of thing that replenishment of that account is something that's gonna have to be thought about. In the next five or ten years, just so that we can stay ahead of this. Now, South Windsor has, over the years, done quite a bit in terms of open space funding, putting it aside. And you might say to yourself, well, we're good today, we got three point six million, I say, yes, you're good today.
Not even close.
Five or ten years from now, it may be a whole different matter, depending on timing, things may happen in rushes or bunches, depending on the economy. The aging demographics and et cetera.
One issue that we have with that is. We haven't been spending too much of it in recent times. Because the developers have a bigger pocketbook for the open space land. If it has a value of a million dollars, we might offer them the value of a million dollars. And the developer will offer them two million dollars for it, to develop it for housing. And he'll still make money on it. And. I think that's what we found with Open Space Task Force, that we're having issues with spending the money. Because the properties aren't available at this time, and if the developer gets there before we do. We're blocked out.
And it's happened with a couple of big parcels in town the last six, seven years.
It's almost like you wanna have a referendum question yearly saying to the taxpayers, you give permission to the town council to to fund the. You know, the uh, the balance to. And give them the leeway to purchase.
The challenge can still be, as Bart points out, that the the. Value of the property, and we say, you know, the the town's approach is, you know, we're not paying more than the appraised value of the property. Developer would come along and say, you know what, I can still make money and pay, I could pay more than that and still make money. So, any executor or seller is gonna say, I love the town, I've lived through my whole life, but I'm not.
It's better.
Yes. So, but the issue would be this, that if we thought about this, is open space makes such a wonderful commodity for people in town. If our first approach is to say, we'd love to be able to buy these properties, the ones that have been highlighted, we think these are great opportunities for us who wanna be in the mix. But if we're not successful. Those and other properties around them are still gonna be fifty percent open space subdivisions, we're gonna get half the land and development on the other half. And as Steve pointed out earlier, that could, that could be a balance, it may not be the best or the optimal balance, but it's still a balance that could help us achieve our vision.
It also impacts the market of the property, right? A developer now. They may say, you know what? So, it may have kind of dual.
Plus, it allows us to build these corridors that, you know, for hiking trails, if not greenways, you know. And and for wildlife corridors.
And to build on all the great work that's been done in South Windsor over the years, it's sort of like a jigsaw puzzle, it's coming together, then the pieces don't happen in a linear. We're not doing all the edges first, but we're we've got pieces and, you know, there's clearly examples. From one of the maps I saw in the back of the open space plan, it was sort of like no property lines, it was just colored parcels. But because the property lines were there, you weren't distracted by the roads and the other stuff, and suddenly the connectivity potential that exists just jumped off the page. At us, and so I think that's what we'd like to talk about with you in the future. Okay, so I'd like to move on, I don't think this is a resolved issue, natural resources, I think we've pretty much identified the strategies, I think going forward. Open space, I think there's some more work to done, to do, excuse me. I think agricultural resources is clearly something we touched on as part of open space, it's clearly important to the town. Twenty fourteen P O C D has a section on farmland. And so it had a number of steps that seemed almost sort of. Not nitpicky, but but really kind of minor steps. And I think what we'd like to do is work with you to get a bigger sort of overall vision here. I think we talked about, you know, sort of threats to farmland, et cetera. If if we look at the land that we had in South Windsor historically, colonial times and how good it was, but development has happened. But also, some of this land is open space, it's subdivision open space, et cetera, it's committed. But the actual land that's really available for farming is not as prevalent as we often think that it is. So, I don't know if this is a call to action or what it is, but it's certainly an issue that we wanna be focusing on.
I gotta ask you, when was then?
I just, these are just the the native soil types, if you will, in South Windsor. And then now has taken some of our preliminary open space information and saying, well, look, if the land is developed or committed, we're gonna put it on there now. Now, some of these are town-owned parks and open space, right, so, and there's some town-owned land that's being farmed at least. So, it's not a fully accurate map at this point in time, but I think we're just trying to illustrate here the fact that farmland is.
Pretty accurate.
It's 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 not as prevalent as we thought it was, and the map in the twenty fourteen P O C D looked more like the one on the left than the one on the right.
So, are there opportunities to use open space and turn it into farmland again, or is that, has that ship sailed? I mean, we got the priest farm, we got up on Barbara Hill Road. Yeah, I guess we don't wanna turn those into developments if we can avoid it, but.
That big green thing is the priest farm, isn't it?
On Sullivan Avenue, no, it's down there, it's the lowest green.
It could be the block above that, though, above the yellow, just above that.
But, I mean, whatever, I mean.
Yeah, whatever.
Are there other open space opportunities where the Open Space Task Force could say? You know, this would be actually a nice farm if we just.
Well, and I think if if again, we're going to have a tendency to promote open space subdivisions. We could look at a subdivision and say, this open space on this parcel that we want. Is going to be preserved for farmland, active farmland. And so, we can design the subdivision around the farming opportunities. As as we've explained to you before, there's a general sense in Connecticut state laws that a P O C D is an advisory document. It's aspirational, points in the right direction. There's two ways that it becomes a legally enforceable document, one of which is the commission, based on an open space plan. Can use it to tell the developer, I don't want your triangle at the end of the cul-de-sac, we want the open space over here. You can do that. And the second one is road connections, if you believe you need a road connection between two different parts of town, your P O C D shows it. Developer says, I wanna build a cul-de-sac, you can say no. So, I think this is an area that we would like to work with you to share this information, and if there are open space opportunities. Where the open space could be used for agriculture, either because it's open space you already have or open space you may get in the future. That could be a way to bring those two things together.
So, if somebody on Main Street with one of those nice long properties decides they wanna convert it to housing. Especially on the west east side. We can say, well, okay, but you're gonna give us some open space and that's gonna be preserved for farming, not for bike trails or something.
And we'd have to have rules attached, I mean, it's gotta be, you know, tillable soil, it's not forested land, it's it's would have to be linear. For tractors to be able to, you know, it's gotta be tillable, you know, that's. Don't, don't give us a block of land that's, you know, you know, forty feet wide and four hundred feet long. We, that, that's not an interest. So, there'd have to be guidelines put in place for that as well.
If those things are gonna come up, unless they all get together, they're gonna come up one parcel at a time. And we're gonna have to say, well, it's the sidewalk to nowhere problem.
It just won't let go.
We gotta do our, each piece when it comes, if it's ten years down the road before they connect up, okay, that's life.
And it's the demograph, like, you know, the the stewards of the land are aging out. And that's. I've been saying that for years.
But we lease land out to farmers.
I think that one of the strategies here we have for your consideration is, again, continue to support existing farmers and the right to farm. We wanna support the farmers we've got, we've had for years. Continue our efforts to preserve farmland in terms of purchase of the land, the development rights. Require open space development if farmland is to be developed, so that we can try to preserve it either as open space or as farmland clusters. Again, be prepared, the intergenerational changes in the next ten to twenty years may accelerate the conversion of farmland, which means having money available could be important to us.
Change that from five to ten instead of ten to twenty. It's gonna happen during this, during this, that, that, that is wrong.
It's happening now.
Five to ten.
And I think decide how and whether to prioritize efforts in terms of if if we need to sort of take a look at our open space. Farmland, open space strategy, we can go ahead and do that. I had a conversation with Jeff and Michelle about this issue in terms of. The town has acquired the priest farm, has has a master plan for it, but if dollars are tight. Do we put the dollars into acquiring land, or do we put the dollars into enhancing the priest property?
Buy more land and let some donor take care of the. Let it lie.
Could be a generation away for making sensitive property, but I think you're better off buying it before it gets developed.
So, this is the hard type of decision that happens as part of a plan, but the issue could be, if we focused on the priest property, we didn't have money to preserve open space. It's gonna slide through our fingers, so.
It's a great chunk of land and I'm glad they bought it, and if it's sat there like that for the next twenty years, it's a good thing, instead of having four hundred houses on it.
And again, just let a local farmer, you know, you put it out to bed, or you, or it's a lottery, whatever it may be, but keep it agriculture, there's no reason. We don't need to make any, it's been farmed for decades, leave, let it be farmed, but take, take the three point six million and buy other land. Don't worry about preserving.
I'm gonna say this, that I lived in the same street for the last forty-four years, all right, at what I also wrote from my parents. The priest farm is the last chunk of farm property that I drive by in the way to work. There's no other.
Are we?
From it out there.
I mean, are we missing out on something changing in the way the farm business is gonna work in town? I mean, it's been family business associated with family-owned land. But we're talking about, you know, we're making these acquisitions, the development rights thing. But if there's no one there who wants to farm it, even if we.
There's plenty, there's, there are plenty of generational farmers left in this town, they need the land.
Part of this is, Steve. There are people out there who want to farm, they don't have access to the property, the cost of getting into it. So, the Department of Agriculture runs sort of a dating service, if you will, that they will put aspiring farmers in with farm that's available. And the town could take this on as a bit of a project, if you will, to give people the opportunity to farm the land, keep it in productive use. Continue to renovate the soil, et cetera, so it could be an opportunity. So, I don't, I don't think buying the farmland and just letting it sit and we preserve farmland helps us as much as if we're able to acquire it. And then get people to farm it.
They don't necessarily live there.
They don't have to live there, but I think, you know, some of our housing strategies, we could also look at ways to sort of, you know, blend all of this together. That it could be you farm it and there's a more affordable housing choice or option there. So, but I I think there's a lot of ways that things could tie together, but right now, I think the the focus here would be.
There are, there are an abundant amount of farmers that would love to tell you that. They're, they wanna continue farming, but they've lost it all to the warehouse land, and they, they're, they're fighting for land now. You know, they're.
Some farmers are getting outbid for parcels that they've.
They, they can't, you know, but there's plenty of farmers that are passionate about what they do. We need to help them, because a lot of the big tracts of land that you saw up on that screen, the farmers don't own those parcels. The landowners, these, these families own it and they lease it to the farmers that are to the highest bidder. And sometimes it's just a generational thing that my dad rented to this family for the last twenty years and his kids get into farming, that's. That's what's keeping it alive. Trust me when I tell you, you, there are plenty of farmers that are, that need the land. So, I would rather, like, example for the priest, don't put any more money into the priest property preserving the building.
Well, I think.
Buy more land.
Keep an eye on what the opportunities are, cause I think it's a tremendous resource for the town. But I think the idea about preserving capital for land acquisition could be the most prudent, longer-term strategy.
That's what we need.
So, this is our new chapter, which we're calling, at least for discussion purposes right now, ambiance and sense of place. And some of the things that contribute to the overall ambiance and sense of place in South Windsor, historic resources, scenic, designer view. Undegland, gateways and and community spirit, so there's quite a lot that gets packaged into this. But it's part of what makes up Windsor an attractive community for for many people. Again, in two thousand and fourteen, the chapter was called Community Character, and we're just gonna rename it to get, get away from the use of the word character. I think ambiance and sense of place. Historic resources, there are different types of historic resources. A local historic district is a regulatory situation. And this is one where a certificate of appropriateness is required for activities which occur. And are visible from a public street. Which is different from a place which is on the National Register of Historic Places or the State Register of Historic Places. These are places which are recognized for their collection of or the historic attributes of the property. You can put plaques on them, et cetera, but there's no protection in terms of. Modifications to the structures by homeowners who don't appreciate the historic aspects, et cetera. So, I think.
And if there's a way to preserve other homes, cause I've seen a few get knocked down, especially around the Buckland Road area in the last seven years, I'll say. There's a concentration of historic homes, but not for nothing, I have one of the oldest houses on the east side of town. And there's, there's no, that's saying I want recognition, but there's nothing for people like me who have an historic house in town. There's no resources, there's nothing to fall back on.
So, that's one of the things that we've actually got in terms of strategies here, we we've got historic resource inventory from two thousand and sixteen, so we know where most of them are. We have a demolition delay ordinance to the certified local government, which gives us access to grant money. Our strategies here overall in terms of historic resources is continue to encourage sensitive ownership. I mean, just as we're trying to put farmers together with land, if we can put people who love historic homes into historic homes. As opposed to developers who wanna tear it down and build something else, that would be a step in the right direction.
I I thought that that blue house on the corner of Buckland and Deming Road was kind of a loss. It was a neat-looking house, you know, nice historic property, and they're not gonna, it's on stupid credit union or something there now. I thought that was a total waste.
Windsor savings.
Yeah.
That shouldn't have happened.
And again, that turns into. It's financially, you know, these older homes, they're. They take a lot for people, you know, you have to be passionate, you're steward to that stuff. So, you know, if there'd be some sort of a, and I, and I've talked about this with people in the past, that. If there was like an incentive, like a tax break, to own a home that's seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds, wherever that, wherever it may be. To help you in some way preserve the history of town, you know? But again, that's.
It it becomes lost, like even, like of my way, again, I lived here a long time and the, most of the homes that were historic. I mean, there's an old map of South Windsor from eighteen sixty-seven, you've seen it around, a lot of people have copies of it. When I first moved here, most of those homes on the east side of town were there. You know, fast forward to today, I have one of the last ones, there was no regard for them. They were knocked down with previous subdivision developments, just to get them out of the way, and they built the subdivision. It just seemed that the east side of the town was neglected over the years for that. And. Again, I'm speaking for myself, but those that are left should have some preservation value in town.
So, can I ask you to hold that slot for about four more slides, cause I'm gonna talk about something, but when you guys said tax breaks, a light bulb went off. So can I ask you to hold that slot for about four more slides, cause I'm gonna talk about something, but when you guys said tax breaks, a light bulb went off.
I'm not looking for a tax break.
No, I am, because for the next generation, yeah, please.
Um, hi, sorry to interrupt, um, I just wanna let you know, based very, um, going along with what your conversation. I've already initiated um or created a draft ordinance, um, creating a uh tax abatement program. For the preservation of historic structures, um, I've already pitched it um to the council at an initial meeting, got some positive feedback. Um, I brought the program to the Historic District Commission to get some initial feedback. Um, they were very supportive of the idea and they have some homework to help determine what kind of structures could qualify for that type of program. And I have the intent of uh bringing it to the um Economic Development Commission um at their next meeting. Well, I'm gonna have somebody do it, cause I have to work that night, but um to help to get their uh, get some feedback from them. On how um abatement uh programs can be structured in a way to provide the financial. I don't wanna say incentive, but the relief from um needing to, um, for the, you know, the extra cost of rehabilitating. Um, historic structures above and beyond what a normal renovation project would cost. So that's in the works right now.
That's fantastic.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, oh, thank you, thank you, Mark.
Is the demolition delay thing actually delaying anything, I mean, other than a few months?
Well, well, it's.
I mean, have they actually turned anything down?
No, what they'll do is they'll go into a, they'll go into a home that has historic value, and if there's anything architectural or whatever. They will salvage it, like, nobody's gonna tell you, you can't take your home down, like, it's more for preservation of, I'll say artifacts.
It's not a demolition prevention ordinance.
Right, it's, it's.
These are one of the things that come, property rights, if you will, that come with a piece of property. So the demolition delay ordinance in most municipalities works in the sense that if your property is older than. Trying to think how old everybody is in the room here to pick a year that wouldn't offend anyone, but. Just saying, if your house is built before nineteen hundred, it's automatically on the list. Um, if you're gonna demolish it, you have to notify the town within generally like one to two weeks. They will identify whether or not there's anything significant about the property, and if that was the blue house you mentioned, that was, it's a goner. Then we will perhaps look at it to document or preserve, or take out the fireplace, et cetera.
Right.
But, but, uh, generally, the delay is up to ninety days. The purpose is either to explore alternative acquisitions that might work or to move the entire structure. Or preserve some key elements of it or document it, so that's, that's the purpose of the ordinance, it's not prevention.
I guess, seeing these developments, and it's like, developers committed, you know, they, they why now, we gotta take this out, but we have a preset definition of a building. And it's cost effective, of course, but you, I'll bring up like Freeport, Maine, they have the controversy with McDonald's coming in. So McDonald's actually bought an historic house on the main drive right by LL Bean, they converted this old house into McDonald's. It may have cost us some money, and they're making a ton of money up there, but it was still worth having it done.
And I used that picture multiple times, cause I think it's a good example of, of these types of efforts and even design review, is that you can work in that regard.
It, it's a good tool, I mean.
So I think our advocacy in the plan is to continue to preserve and protect historic resources and make sure we have good tools available to, to kinda do that. In terms of scenic resources, the twenty fourteen P O C D identified a bunch of different areas in town which have. Um, scenic uh views or scenic areas, uh, Main Street is the only one designated as a scenic road in town. Um, but I think this is the first step to preserving these scenic resources and views. When a developer comes to you and you say, we've recognized for ten or twenty years that the scenic aspect of this property. And that ties in again to our mandatory open space preservation approach or something else. We can try to preserve these when development happens in the future, because we've mapped it and this is due process. We've explained to people that this scenic view is important for us.
So an example that comes to my mind is uh one of the two Desan tree farms.
Yep.
And I know he's been approached by solar developers who could make him a ton of money by just letting them put a solar farm there. How do we take this concept and apply it on that section of Barbara Hill Road?
The concept of, I think it's.
Well, we wanna preserve scenic areas, but he wants to put a solar farm there. Where he, you know, fortunately, he's got generations that wanna keep farming, but.
He's a steward to the land, so.
Yeah, but, you know, when that generation's children wanna become uh nuclear engineers. Uh, you know, then the opportunity to convert the land to a solar farm will be pretty appealing.
So I don't know that you can prevent certain things from happening, but I think identifying the scenic views allows us to at least have this conversation. Again, I live in Simsbury, Simsbury, the former Cobro Tobacco Land, the town acquired the whole piece, but there was also, I think it's. At one time was the largest solar farm in Connecticut, which was built on a former tobacco property. We had this whole debate in Simsbury about preserving the land and the agriculture and all of the other stuff. And ended up that the three state citing council basically overrode Connecticut and cited the facility there. So we never actually got to the point of solving this particular problem, but I think, uh, let me think about, about that aspect.
But if we declare, what Steve is saying is like, if we declare that as a scenic area. And we impose those open space regular, like, we, again, you make it tougher for the developer, like.
The solar, I mean, Simsbury cut a deal where that, at the end of the thirty year useful life of the solar collectors, they're gonna get the property for a dollar. So they said, okay, we're, we're not, we're gonna get our open space, it's not gonna cost us anything, we'll get it after thirty years, after they've depreciated.
Yeah, because I mean, someone comes and says, this is four megawatts, citing council says, build it. You got no, you, you can complain and testify and all that, but.
Yes, let me figure out, if I can figure out what Simsbury did. So I think scenic resource strategies, um, continue to purchase land, development rights. Um, scenic roads, uh, we designate scenic roads to maintain their scenic aspects. So it becomes a consideration in road improvements and straightening, widening and, you know. Creating the scenic characteristics, et cetera. Um, possibly consider uh preparation of some design guidelines, which would help maintain scenic aspect of areas. Most of the lighting, as you're perhaps aware, is go to LED lighting these days. And there's a world of difference between different types of LED lighting and the color temperature of the bulb. Um, so to make sure we get our regulations in, that whatever LED lighting we get in the future is at least fitting in with the ambiance and sense of place. In South Windsor. Another thing to consider is telecommunication principles. The basic idea here is that the town does not have the ability to tell the citing council whether or not to approve a, a tower. No, go ahead and do it, but the citing council has demonstrated over the years that if you have telecommunication principles. About the things you would like to try to accomplish, they will try to work with you and the applicant to get a tower facility in place. That meets everybody's needs, so you can't stop the towers, but you can guide the towers. And telecommunication principles might be something to, to think about here. I think uh Main Street has been studied multiple times over the years, we've looked at it as a part of the past P O C D. In terms of possible development configurations, vibrant community initiatives, there was a study done of Main Street. Um, so there's been quite a bit of evaluation of this area. Um, I think in some respects, the proprietors don't want anybody telling them what to do.
Current property.
Yeah, property, I get it.
And, yep, I'm there.
So I think the issue here is that we can recognize all the assets that we have here, the possible threats uh to the area. Um, but, you know, there's no clear pathway of exactly what to do unless we're gonna try to impose a regulation on this area. Which, which hasn't always played well in the past, so uh, it's uh, it's a conundrum in some respects. Biggest threat, I think, is again, loss of farmland and scenic attributes due to, due to development.
That is the biggest, that is, that's the biggest one, that's the next generation.
So working in undeveloped lands is a quick conversation, um. Under Connecticut state law, you've perhaps heard of the Public Act four ninety program. This is a program that makes uh land less expensive to own, uh, if it falls into one of four different buckets. And the buckets are farmland, forest land, maritime heritage land, which we don't, don't have, I'm sorry. Get you to the program, and the other option, uh, is what I call the local option, which is that. We, as part of the P O C D, get to suggest a program, and if it's approved by the council, we can offer this local option. Now, let me circle back for a moment, the farm program is that I am farming the property, I'm generating farm income. I'm filing a Schedule F and my land is automatically enrolled in the state program by the assessor. I apply for it, it gets applied, there's no decision on anybody's part, it's basically administrative in nature. Land values go down to about somewhere three hundred bucks an acre or less, in terms of assessed value. So the tax value is quite low, but there's really no services the town provides for farmland, okay, I got it, there's a crop fire, we run out there or something. The forest assessment is a little bit different, this requires a parcel or parcels totaling twenty-five or more acres. With an active forest management plan, and if you hold a parcel of twenty-five or more acres, you get the reduced assessment. Again, it's, it's quite beneficial, and the land becomes much less expensive to own in terms of taxes. Um, and you can see the number of parcels in each of those two categories. The P A four ninety local option is something that the statutes have set up. And the only way that the town can do this is, A, it's recommended in the P O C D, and B, adopted by the legislative body. So if we don't recommend it here, the town can't do it. So we've been talking with the assessor, and we think we would like to suggest for your consideration some modifications to this. In other words, if I have a forest of twenty-two acres, right now, I'm ineligible for the program. But if the land is expensive to own, then people are gonna put it into development at certain times. So there might be some advantages for us to consider in this particular area. When you were talking earlier about historic houses, I thought about the P A four ninety program as being an eligible one. This local option for us, you would make the, the land less expensive to own. It's a land assessment program, not a, a property assessment program, but it also has a recapture provision. So I'm just gonna let the wheels work on this one just a little bit, it might be something else for us to do. So, South Windsor historically has not had this program, and again, I think we're gonna make some suggestions for you. South Windsor has done some, work on some gateways, we have the Stonewall Gateway Features in two locations. Um, we've got some other gateway features in other locations in town. Um, but we think it's really kind of a part of South Windsor celebrating who we are as a community, where we are, and all the things that are going on. You're, you're not quite sure, as you come up Buckland Road, exactly where's the Manchester, what's, where are we here? Um, so these might be things for us to think about, uh, and particularly with the new arts commission, we could do some creative things, if you will, in terms of gateway features. I do think the Stonewall with the welcome to South Windsor is, is a nice, nice touch. Uh, we don't do that everywhere, but I think gateways are a, a way to celebrate, again, our community. Design review, we have a design review process, we've got dedicated experienced staff, a receptive planning and zoning commission. We've got an architectural design review committee that gets together to review applications and provide information to the commission. I was uh smitten with your regulations where you allow for porches, um, which basically is sort of a freebie. And so there's just pictures of houses before and after, and, and the importance of design and, and what porches, what a difference.
That's the thing where we allowed open porches, uh, up to six feet over the setback line. Which actually started in the zoning board of appeals, we sent them to planning and zoning. And said, keep planning and zoning to allow you to build a porch, there are too many of you to call it a hardship associated with your.
But I think, I've, I've seen this in other communities, I think it works great, so, good for you. Um, uh, and I think, uh, just recognizing community pride and spirit, I think there's so many things that South Windsor does really, really well. Um, you've always provided good services to residents, your public engagement in terms of surveys, activities, meetings and online information. I, I think is excellent, um, you embrace the diversity inclusiveness in the community. Um, in terms of activities and events that make people feel part of the community. Um, an opportunity to celebrate old traditions and start new ones, and I think recognize you and other volunteers who help make this town work. So I think, uh, recognizing the community pride and spirit is, is, is an important part of South Windsor and I think for the P O C D. So I think that. So I think, uh, for some of this, we've got enough, I think, to start crafting the planning chapters. I think on some of the other things for figuring out open space, we've got some more work to do, um, I'm gonna show that back to you later, process controls. Thank you for your out there time, Pat.
And if I could just go back to the survey, if anybody has any changes. They want to talk about, I, I, I saw we were getting a little bogged down with that at the beginning. Uh, but please feel free to express them by email, if you wanna put everybody in there, that's fine too. There were, uh, if we could just touch on twenty-eight of the survey. Because there's been a, a little bit of discussion about that property after a couple of planning and zoning meetings. But the forty-six acre site on Wheeler Road is one of the bigger.
The creepy truck lot in the back?
Yeah, yeah, and I had talked with Manchester Chairman of Planning and Zoning about that. Um, he says, well, that's your land, where the, the trailer trucks are parked.
All of South Windsor.
Yeah, so, um. But, uh, if you could just go over that one question, Glenn, that'd be great, forty-six acre site.
Sure, so this is, uh, we haven't touched on it yet, uh, because I think, um, the future meeting on infrastructure and development. But we thought this really presented your largest developable piece of commercially zoned land. And since we have the largest audience for our community survey, we thought it would be interesting to ask kind of perceptions on this property. Um, if, if folks were to think about what future uses would be appropriate on this site, what uses would those be? Um, so we have a list of uses here. We do have restaurants on here.
Restaurants.
Yeah, but I think it's more of guiding the, the zoning framework here, you know, is this a property where you wanna consider.
If, if we could, let's just focus, please, thank you.
Yep, so, yeah, this is really intended to be informing, you know, a direction for this property, do we keep zoning as is? Do we consider um being more restrictive on types of uses, do we be less restrictive on types of uses?
And the zoning in place right now is not piecemeal. Somebody would have to come in and do a whole plan for the area. It wouldn't be, okay, I'm just gonna carve out this area, I'm gonna put a package store over here, I'm gonna put a gas station. It's a development plan, so.
And it's commercial, as we speak.
Yep.
I can't think, well, we'll go back to the reasons of warehouse or.
Night, nightlife, movie theater.
Movie theater, it's failing over here, it's failing over there.
It's a toll though, they use the truck parking lot, right?
Okay.
Gonna drive it.
It's a perfect warehouse site.
The front porch.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Did you guys have anything else you want to touch on tonight? Um, what about moving forward, I think that was part of our.
Yeah, so let's go look at the schedule here, and.
Next steps.
Yep, so our, our next step, so, um, if you could maybe aim to get comments to Michelle by Friday. That would give us a couple of days next week just to finalize the wording and get it up on the website. So we're looking to launch it uh around the middle of next week, and that way we get it out before the Memorial Day uh weekend.
Yep.
And we'll usually keep it open for at least a month and then kinda reevaluate, we can always extend it if we think we need to hit on. And we'll usually keep it open for at least a month and then kind of reevaluate. We can always extend it if we think we need to hit on particular groups.
What's the mechanics of answering the survey gonna be?
So I always recommend allowing multiple responses. And that way, if folks are taking it at the library or they share a computer with multiple members of their household, then they can access it and then we'll do a screen of the IPs at the end. And um if we see anything suspicious, we can always filter those out. Um, but that is better than, you know, some, whenever I've closed it uh and restricted it to one per device, that ends up being way more problematic than.
Okay, I mean, you're talking about a web page or some sort of. It's probably software out there, you put these things in, right?
Yep, so we will be hosting it on the um online website, so we'll be integrating it with that, the one that uh town staff has created. And then typically what we'll do is we'll also have some paper copies available for the senior center or uh town hall that can be kind of on on request if you need it, uh and then try to drive as many folks to the online survey as possible.
So Michelle, giving me some uh some talking points on the distribution of it. She said, you know, email blasts could be could be um one, press release, advertising, you know, where to use it. Obviously on the website, uh possibly even distribution at the strawberry fest for flyers or something like that. So we can generate some interest. I guess this is a general survey, it's not gonna be targeted towards specific groups.
Correct.
Like the past one was. Ideally, we'd like to get everybody from all ages.
Every demographic.
Every every category and understand different thoughts and ideas and what's best for our community going forward. So I think in the past, um even at a location, the survey online, you can do it on your phone. So even at, you know, the festivals or whatever, just give people a little neon strip of paper with a QR code boom, and they can, their kids can be eating cotton candy and they can be doing that. So there's all sorts of different ways to get it done, and I actually think the online just works better than the older paper copies and I mean, uh, we've seen surveys, two thirty in the morning, somebody's up and doing the surveys, okay, I'm sleeping.
Can you like do half of it and come back later? Those kind of things that frustrate people.
Yes, it's not one of these, yeah, so uh actually, we don't know, cause it's the town's, we should check that.
Yeah, I'll I'll check. If not, they can come back and and refinish.
Just segueing into the strawberry fest as one activity. Um, we have been given the opportunity to have a booth at the strawberry fest. Um, and uh I believe that Open Space Task Force and Planning and Zoning are gonna share that space. Um, and we'll have the opportunity to talk to people about our plant and conservation development and the process going through and, like Jeff said, QR codes and scan this and, you know, just to get more input from the public. So if anyone is interested in participating, um please reach out to Michelle. I told her I would uh participate. I believe Stephanie said she would participate. Alan's given indication that he'd like to.
Yeah, I'll send the email.
Yeah, so, um.
Are we also doing the Apple Fest?
Yep, the Apple Fest is September.
September, right?
Um, and our plan is gonna go for the next year or so, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Our 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 time, what's our end line, timeline?
So we're looking to get an adoption, I believe, by May or June of twenty four.
Okay. So you have time.
You have a good time.
And then, yeah, we have the workshop coming up quickly, uh, June sixth. Uh, so Michelle is reserved at the community center, um so hopefully we get a good turnout on that and can take a deeper dive on, you know, some of the issues discussed tonight and at some of the other meetings as well, so.
I was thinking too, is that Evergreen Walk has a music night on Thursday that brings a lot of people around town. Parks and Rec has a tent there.
That's good.
It may not be a bad spot for that either.
Do we have flyers or anything, like, say like at the library and stuff, is there anything that we're gonna host?
There have, we do have some flyers.
For June sixth.
I don't know if I have any with me, but.
For June, for June sixth?
For June sixth. It's available on what, Jeff? Do you know?
It's um.
It is on the P O C D website, correct?
Yep, we've been distributing them, um, bringing them to the wetland, wetland meeting tomorrow night.
If you could, or just check and see if Michelle has done it already, but email one out to all the commissioners. And you're welcome to put it wherever you want. I know Stephanie has put some in the supermarkets and stuff like that. Um, any places, good, so.
I put one up at the high school.
Awesome.
I was gonna put it on the, is it South Windsor message board on Facebook? I'm just gonna throw it on there. Just take a snapshot of it, scan it, I'll put it on there.
Yeah, uh what you might wanna do is, if you have the ability, is just um cut off the comments.
Yeah, I.
Just, it's informational, because.
Right, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, get pounded.
Yeah.
Yeah, Facebook's kind of a.
Wrong way.
Yeah, but yeah, no, I think it should be put out there because people do go on and see what they're helping.
You're right, cut off the comments.
Yeah, just, you know, so if people wanna show up and comment, great, you know?
Don't comment here.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, you guys are all set? Okay, um, that completes our agenda, so uh somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Your motion is second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I wish it passes unanimously.
Everybody.